Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to our regular town board meeting of October 27th. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of prior minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve our prior minutes from October 14th, 2014, our regular town board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make several announcements, and then if anybody else has any, that would be great. First of all, after working with Henry Campbell and Kathy Kinsella and the county, our Slate Quarry, we're happy to announce that road speed limit has been reduced to 45 miles an hour. And the county, if you've driven the road lately, you might notice that they repaved about a mile and a quarter of it with some high friction asphalt, which we know will be very helpful in the slippery conditions. We're working hard to bring down the accident rates on the road. So, thank you very much to the county for their cooperation in that, and we're looking forward to getting our signs in place. Also, thank you to the three employees of the New York State Department of Transportation, Hooker Woods Substation, who assisted our head of maintenance, Bob Fitzpatrick, in installing and removing the dock. So, thank you very much for that. Does anybody else have any announcements? No? Joe Allen? No? Okay. Thank you. So, we have a presentation tonight from our Rhine Cliff Waterfront Committee. This is the bigger version.
Thank you.
Okay.
Patricia Wang here on behalf of the Rhine Cliff Waterfront meeting. We're here today to present to the town board the master plan document that we studied for the Rhine Cliff waterfront landing. Just to recap, the feasibility study was from a 2008 grant awarded to the town of Rhine Beck from the DUC. The grant was for $30,000 with a match made by the town of $10,000. The grant is specific for the Rhine Cliff waterfront feasibility study. Last summer, the town contracted with the LRC group based in Pecos to complete this feasibility study. And tonight, I'm here with the engineers, Rod Morrison and Henry Thomas of the LRC, to answer any questions that the town board members have after the initial review of this document. All of the town board members should have received this document Monday last week to review in preparation for tonight's meeting. So, as I said, we're here to answer any of those initial questions. Afterwards, we would like to move forward with advising the town on how to proceed with this document, to get it through to completion. We would like to complete this project by the end of the year. The expiration date on this feasibility study was actually September 2014, so we had to file for an extension with the DUC for six months. So, we would like to continue with the goal of completion by the end of the year, so that if we run into any more delays or obstacles, we have a little bit of wiggle room with the timeline to get us finalized. So, with that said, I'll have Hillary and Rod come on up and open the floor up for any questions that the town board members have from their initial review of the document.
Thank you. I think it would be helpful, too, for the public if you could just hit the salient points of what the document proposes. And then, we're going to hear from your recommendation of, you mean you want to extend the feasibility, the feasibility study until the end of the year?
Well, no. So, the feasibility study is really this master plan document. So, we need to have this document accepted by the town so that the project can be completed. So, we propose that, when we move into the next section here, that the document is again reviewed by the town and then proposed to the planning board for review, and then all of the comments and suggestions are brought back to the waterfront committee and the LRC group, so that we can incorporate any additions that the town and the planning would have into this master plan document. Once we are at that point, we should have basically every board signed off on the document so that the project can be considered completed.
Thank you.
And then we can take the document and move forward with other projects from there.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question for you. You call this a feasibility study. I read it. It's recommendations of what we could do in the waterfront. Certainly ideas. It's certainly not feasible in the sense that it doesn't lay out a budget, doesn't say where we're going to get the money. Hopefully, we'll get it in grants. By signing off, I don't know what you think we're going to sign off on this document.
Well, I think we're two-
Who are the engineers can explain that?
I think, I guess there were three questions there. The first is, is this a feasibility study? What it is, is it? And actually, maybe I could have Henry answer this question if he wants to come up.
Excuse me. My voice is working inconsistently. The original grant documents had some specific objectives, which are both listed in this one-page press sort of an area overview, but as well, there's a section in which lists the specific charges. And those are relatively specific in terms of questions that the committee sought answers to. So, however, you know, well, we've done this something a bit more comprehensive, of course, than simply answer those questions directly. But it was imperative on our part to certainly make sure that these items were specifically addressed by any number of different components in the report. In a very broad sense, you know, what we endeavored to do was examine the physical nature of the place, gather as much information about the facility as it stands today, the way it operates, who uses it, gather input from the committee and other organizations about what kinds of work we'd like to see go on there. And then to explore, excuse me, opportunities or ways that additional use could be supported and encouraged. And certainly, any physical improvements have to be in response to demand, and can physical improvements create new demands as best. So, the feasibility portion of it is really, are there opportunities to do anything at the waterfront beyond what is already there? The property is really a postage stamp, and actually, what the town owns is limited to pretty much what is already improved. So, the question is, feasibly, are there more improvements we can make to expand opportunities to the waterfront, the use of the waterfront? Are there ways of utilizing adjacent properties that we can advantage of to expand use of the waterfront and access to them? And then generally, if we create these things, is there anybody that would be interested or will be able or willing to take advantage of them? So, while I certainly concur that the plan does illustrate, the graphic plans and the narrative plans do illustrate a range of things that could be done, they don't necessarily dictate that they have to be done or that they are all linked to each other, but it does present a range of possibilities. And of course, the key ingredient to any of them advancing is, is there a way to make it happen? Our charge was not to go get funding, our charge was to identify and set different ways of perhaps attacking that. And for the nature of this study, it would be different than if you were commissioning a specific design of a facility, you know, for a home. We would have a lot more, pretty hard data, do a lot more serious and actual specific engineering. We actually don't do that much design, that much engineering, don't get that much data that you know that exactly how everything is going together. So, it is an overview in an overall plan. I'm not sure if I actually answered your question. I wandered way off course. But hopefully, I started to address some of the reasons that Patricia wanted to step up here in first place. So, what we have done in the report, now that I'm added, if that's okay, is we've reviewed the existing conditions. As I said, we've taken in as much information as we could gather, spoken to as many people as are available in terms of stakeholders. That doesn't mean that there isn't other input to be gained. But tried to take all of that into account to determine what kinds of things would be good here and what could go in. And then presented some of the issues about how to go about accomplishing those in the environmental and permitting with those kinds of things, as well as permissions and so on. So, it is, it is a long-term plan, I'm certain. And there are lots of different ways to break it down. And the back of the report does have sort of a general guideline as to how they can make it fully connect together in the easiest action. But again, those priorities are not absolute. Somebody came and was willing to sponsor something that was lower on the list, but was willing to make it happen, obviously, if you could appreciate my suggestions.
Thank you.
So, I guess I just want to add that really, the idea of this document is that it is a starting block. It is a place for us to begin to use, to pursue additional development, additional grants. This is just step one. And if, or when it is completed and the town signs off on it, we now have a document that is approved to use to go forward to try to find additional funding to make anything in this document happen. Obviously, with whatever approval the town, you know, would make over each individual suggestion inside the document.
Yeah. So, excuse me, and I do have the first one or two things to do with the conference plan.
Well, as Henry stated, if you go towards the back section of the document, we did break it down into, you know, one to two years, two to three years. So, it's broken down to goals that would be easier to obtain in the first one to three years, and then goals that are larger and would take, you know, five to 10 years to achieve. So, that is all addressed in there.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Well, my comments are, first of all, I like the plan. I like that it's spread out over 10 years. Gives us a lot of time and a lot of change on the town boards to go through, and the economies and everything else. I'm concerned about the bulkhead. Hadn't thought about that before, and that makes me a little nervous, but I'm glad we know what it is and that we have eight to 10 years of what's there now. Sally spent half of her life getting that place fixed, and, you know, now it's, the metal's starting to give. The Amtrak part of this seems to be absolutely critical. If we adopt this plan, all we're doing is adopting it as a master plan to work from over time. If we get to Amtrak and get an agreement with them, then we could do something down there. Otherwise, we're pretty limited, it sounds from this. And the feasibility of the finger docks or the floating docks or whatever in Sweat Barge, they're technically feasible?
Sure.
Okay. Well, that was where we went two years ago for this. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I think, though, we can pick and choose various things from it, as opposed to adopting the whole thing and see what time brings and how flush the taxpayers are and how much , you know, the bill layer willing to put.
I agree with you, but this is the whole menu.
Right.
And over time, you pick it.
Right. But again, you don't have to order the whole dinner. You can see how hungry you are at various stages. Some of this, I think, is practical without much maintenance. Some of it allows a great deal of expense and a great deal of maintenance. So, I think the pieces have to be considered as in the whole.
I think the CFA process next year, though, is a good opportunity to work with the committee to get some of that grant money.
Like I said, that, Rod Morrison, the idea, too, Joe, is that it's, we intentionally, we actually intentionally did not put prices to these things, because we tried to put together a whole package of potential planning choices. There may be something that everybody gets passionate about that takes $2 million that 30 people, the committee, the town throw their time and funds behind to get the grants for it. So, the idea is that, we took it as, let's create something that can be done on the north and the south, because obviously, the work can be done. But the idea of the master plan is, this is a whole picture. If the plan is adopted by the town, if there's a component that, as Elaine says, is ripe for funding from CFA, then we've already got the approved document, so we don't have to actually, it's almost a shovel-ready from a point of view of getting future funding. So, that was the idea, that the whole thing fit together. And I think at the end, once it goes through the planning board, we come across, there'll undoubtedly be something else that we want to add in there, that we will come back and go back through the committee and attach some potential costs, some idea of what it would take to move forward with certain pieces of it.
Now, you, I know you spoke to a lot of people when you were developing this, but what's the best way for us to engage the public, to talk about what you've presented and, you know, what we could pursue in the first one to two years, or, you know, for picking and choosing?
Just talking to the public, you know? We have, we hold the annual Rhine Cliff Waterfront Day, and that is an opportunity for us to put our ideas out there to the waterfront, actually, to the residents and the locals. We have the kiosk that is down at the waterfront that, you know, is very out of date, we could update with the new plan. Certainly, any grants that we see that come up, that we go before the town board to try to go after, you know, it's a public forum in the town board meetings for the public to come and hear about or learn about what the waterfront is doing. There is a Rhine Cliff Waterfront Facebook page that I know is trying to put information out on so that people in the area can be involved and informed on the waterfront.
Would a workshop be helpful? Do you have a, you know, it's a lot, this is a lot, even a lot of information in here to go through, but just to let the public know what, you know, the top five things are that we could do, I think something like that would be helpful, even if we could.
Absolutely. We do there, we do here. We've done it before when working on the parks, for instance, so it's absolutely doable. Once approved, it'd be nice that it came up on the town's website, along with whatever any other master plan type documents that they have. This next month is the idea flushing out from you, from the planning board, is also make sure we're in sync with your other work.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you so much. That's a lot of hard work and time and energy you guys all put into this, and thank you very much. It's a great plan.
Thank you, Patricia.
Okay. So, I guess from there, like I said, the next step with this document will be for the town board to present it to the town planning board. And, you know, give them two weeks with it to read it, review it, make suggestions and comments, and bring those back to you, you know, maybe by the end of November, so that then the town board, at their first December meeting, could possibly review these comments and collaborate from there forward, bringing back all of the comments to the Rhine Cliff Waterfront Committee and the LRC, so that the LRC could incorporate them all into a final version of this document. So, I guess my big point is that we really want to set a deadline for the end of the year for this document.
Thank you. John, do you want us to, should we have a vote to present this to the planning board and the CAB?
One of us.
Yep. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Second.
Well, the motion being that we are going to forward this document to the planning board and the CAB for comments, and then we'll be able to proceed with it in a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. So, we will deliver it to the planning board and the conservation advisory board and ask for their comments. Sally?
May I?
Yeah, please.
Sally Mosarella, I'd like to say that I'm just thrilled that they're at this point, you know, over 20 years ago, when I worked on a federal grant that brought us over a quarter of a million dollars to put in all the steel sheet piling to protect and restore that waterfront. At that time, at high tide, we were three and a half feet underwater, so there was really nothing there at that point. I'd like to say that today, because of Hurricane Sandwee, there are federal dollars that may be available for the dock, in addition to certainly DOS and the LWRB, you know, with state funding, but I think there could be some matches with federal dollars for that. I just think this is an exciting opportunity. When you think of Rhine Beck as a waterfront community, we're eight miles along the Hudson River, and this is the only point of public access that this is a piece. And yes, working on the waterfront is expensive, but we do it a piece at a time, and that's how we were able to restore that area. So, I wish them a lot of luck and success. It's an exciting opportunity.
It is. Thank you, Sally and Patricia, and the committee, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Committee reports and liaison reports. We have the mayor and the police here tonight, which Pete, come on, would you like to address us, Pete?
Good evening, everyone. Pete Dunhill-Dranek, Police Department, Washington, D.C. The reason I came tonight was to discuss, I've read in the papers and talked to town supervisors about the proposed cuts to the town board's going on about-
Is this on the agenda today? Is this a budget thing, or?
Pete would like to speak to us, so I think-
Because I thought we had scheduled a session, so I didn't come to a budget meeting.
Pete asked today if he could come. I said, sure. He's not available for the rest of our budget meetings.
You're not available?
Tomorrow night, my daughter's on the soccer team, she has a-
And the next, I mean, we had-
The next night, they have sectionals, so I won't be available.
Because I think you had said you want to stick very strictly to a budget, and you've objected when we have tried to put something on, certainly here, Pete, but-
Well, I think this is a committee or department report. I think it's appropriate under committee or liaison reports. If you don't want Pete to speak, we can certainly wait until new business.
I don't have any problem with letting him speak, but you can't have one rule for town board members, and you can't have another rule for other people.
Pete's the head of our police department, and I think it's appropriate under liaison Does anybody else have any other feeling here?
Well, if he's not available, he's not available. But I was under the same impression that anything budget-related that we were scheduling specific meetings with people at the budget, if he's not available, you know, I understand.
I'm not available tomorrow night or next night, unfortunately. All right. So, I just came to talk about the proposed cuts to the budget for the police. What I'm understanding is approximately $6,000 out of patrol and $2,000 out of the mileage for the budget. Does that confirm that? That's what I'm reading, that's what I'm trying to understand, is that, is that where proposed, the town-
Yes.
Okay. So, my question is to the board is, I understand that cuts have to be made, but as long as the board understands that I'd like to sit down with you after the budget, if it's set and done, what we can do to modify it? If you cut that amount of money out of it, we'll have to sit down and discuss on how we'll adjust the patrols for the remainder of the year, being that the town and village have a contract together, you know, certain fees for that. So, if that money's cut, I'd just like to be advised that the town board will have to cut back on that. So, I just want to bring that up to your attention. And also, the reason being is cuts, I'm just trying to get some feedback from you. Is it just because of the total budget as a whole, or is there something else that, you know, I'm not aware of? Is that why we're cutting the funding?
My view was, we looked at how much we'd spent, and based on what we'd spent year after year after year, if we took 10% out, you still were whole. We'd allocated more than you'd used.
Okay. So, that's good. Okay. Because the last time I looked, it was approximately $19,000 left in there, and we still have October, November, and December to go. So, we're pretty much on line to spend not quite all of it, there should be a few thousand dollars left at the end of fiscal year. And being that the village's fiscal year is six months different than the town, I was just trying to get a gain on that. We're figuring out, we're six months apart. So, we do our budget in early spring, and yours is, you know, January to December. So, that's why I was trying to figure out where we were going and what the steps we're going to take to move forward.
Here are a couple of questions. Until we get for the police, there's court time. Does that include both the time of people, policemen coming to testify, as well as the time for either a policeman or a constable to be here? It's a combined number?
Yes, correct. Every month, I provide a bill, the bill gives you a bill, and that's broken down for patrol and court. Talked to the town supervisor today. What she'd like it now is broken down even further for court officers versus officers that come to court and prosecute tickets. So, starting in October, when you get the next bill, I'll break it down even further for you. So, it'll say, it'll have patrol hours, you know, that. It'll break it down for officers who are court officers, and also officers that are showing up for trials.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm going to list the officers individually for the ones that come for trial and also for court officers.
So, we can see if the courts are, can be made more efficient to-
Correct.
-try to hold. I guess the other thing is, our revenue from fines is going down. You have any explanation why?
I don't. No. The fines are basically based on the tickets that are written every year, through the enforcement agencies that are out there. And the fines are set by the courts, and the police normally don't get into the courts except by the judges. So, that's what you have to speak to the court about, but the police, normally, we don't set the fines, it's set by the courts.
Revenue is down, what, about 10%?
Pete, this cut that we're looking at making, how will it affect our service?
Well, that's another thing. If you cut it, we'll cut back patrol, which means you'll probably be generating even less revenue. Based on that, we have a contract between the two municipalities. There are instances where we're not on town patrol, we will go out, we bill you for that. So, that's another thing I'm going to try to keep an eye on. There are services that we provide to the community when we're in the village and not in the town, but there are emergency situations where we go out and we assist people, certain emergencies, whether it are car accidents or whatever there is. So, we bill you for that. We continue to do that. We have to keep an eye on that a lot closer. If we cut that down to make it, you know, adjusted controls, we'll all have to keep an eye on that also. Come towards the end of fiscal year, October and November, hopefully, we're going to come in on budget, whereas what you're allocating, so.
Maybe that should be broken out separately, too.
It is now. So, here's what we do. We did, for instance, for two cases recently, in the last couple of weeks, we go to call the station for the subject who needs assistance, his residence, he got hurt. I send the car out because the state police sheriff wasn't available. We go there, we assist them, we get medical assistance. That takes about an hour, depending on the situation. We fill out a town patrol sheet, we adjust the time sheet to show we started in the village, in the village, start the town, end of the town. We give a patrol sheet to you, it says start time, end time, tells you who the officer is, tells you what the case number is. So, that's broken down. So, we do that now. Same thing with a car accident, the engine not available, we go out to it, that also happens, we send the car out and look for it.
Just back on what I said, at the end of September, we're 61% of budget.
Right.
And we should be at 75, right, if we're going to burn it? So, that's why we set the 10%.
That's why I understood, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Just so you understand. Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out. So, and then again, with the cases with courts, it's hard to tell from one year or another, some years are more particular, some years are less.
I think the trend has been going down.
Is it? Okay. So, that's what I was here to say. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks a lot.
Good luck in the summer, again.
Thank you very much.
I'll just bring up another budget scheduling issue, and then there we have a committee or a liaison...
Can I piggyback on that?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no problem. I'm thinking around the back.
Pete, I thought you were leaving, I'm sorry.
No, I wasn't leaving, I just wanted to piggyback on, just kind of, you know, highlight what you get for the, you know, the budget amount. I know it's been reduced by a great amount over, I'd say the last five years, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, what is it, gross 40%, something like that?
I think we went from 75 to, what do we, yeah.
Down under 50.
Yeah, 50.
So what the town gets is, you know, 12 to 18 hours a week of police coverage, you know, that covers the whole town, including Rhinebeck, whereas the village, we have that in a day. So, just to make you aware of what, you know, what the limited budget gets you in terms of, in terms of coverage, and just to know when, when that car that's assigned to the village has to go out to the town on the, you know, per-case basis, like Pete gave the example, then the village, now we've given up our car, and our police officer and our security, so they didn't go out to service the town, so it's, you know, it's much better if you have somebody on in the town in addition to the village, but that relates to maybe two or three six-hour shifts a week. That's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Budget. Let me just find my notes here. Are we still sticking with our, sorry, I lost my notes that John gave me. Are we still sticking with our hearing on the 5th of November? That's fine with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make it clear that then we sort of have to finish the, the budget has to be finished on the evening of the 29th, so that it can be on John's desk the morning of the 30th. We have to place the ad tomorrow at 4:00 P. M. I'm pretty confident we can get there, but I just wanted to make you all, we can move it if you don't think we can wrap this up on the evening of the 29th, but we're, if we're sticking with it, that's what we have to do. Wrap it up on the 29th, have it finished and on John's desk on the 30th, it could be available for the public, and the ad will go in the paper tomorrow.
And we, I understand that the next draft will reflect cuts and changes in the budget, so it comes in out of the tax cap, it will not exceed the...
We're not expecting to, no. We still haven't met with REC and the healthcare providers, although I've met with the healthcare providers, you still have the opportunity to change the coverage if you like, and, you know, we'll have time to make last-minute adjustments for that. The budget that work with, finish it up tomorrow, I have a few things to look at, will be just around the tax cap, and there'll be more chance to move money around before we finish it.
And we're still scheduled to meet tomorrow night and...
At 6:00. Yes.
I'd ask REC to come up later.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any announcements or committee reports, liaison reports? Nope. I'd like to go out of order, since we have the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park Committee here, and we have two agenda items on, so we are going to make a motion for Resolution 2014-339, bid specifications and request for proposal for the Thompson Mazzarella Park Pavilion, and I'll bundle them, if that's okay. 2014-340, specifications and requests for proposal for the Thompson Mazzarella Park Infrastructure. May I have a second?
Second. Let me make a statement, Elizabeth, I'm not participating in anything related to the Thompson Mazzarella Park because of my board membership on the Winkler Trust.
So you're recusing yourself?
So I will recuse myself of anything involving it.
Even discussion or voting?
Discussions. I still reserve the right as a member of the public to comment on anything from the audience, but not the public.
Okay. Thank you. We have Bob Ellsworth and Sally Mazzarella here, and did you want to present anything to us, or you're asking for our approval to go out to R F P for a bid on the pavilion and the infrastructure structure?
Right. I think we just want to replicate the town board and the public that, at this point, we have all the approvals in place. You have received the R F P from Weston Sampson and Corfitt and Associates, that has been approved by town council, the front-end documents have all been approved, we have New York State Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation, the SHIPO approval on the archaeological work, we have New York State D C D for environmental conservation approval in place, sort of in cooperation with the Dutchess County Health Department on the septic system. I think, Elizabeth, you have something, you have to sign in regard to that, but that approval has happened. We have New York State D O T on the new access road for the park, the village planning board and the town planning board have their approvals in place, so we think finally we have also Hudsonia on the environmental aspect of the park and a variety of other approvals in place. So, we're pleased and excited that we feel we could now go out to bid, and I, you have in front of you some of the estimates that we have gotten from the engineers, and hopefully the bids that come in will be closely related to those numbers, I'm hoping, but we're anxious to see the end results of that. We think in going out in November, that probably be a six to eight week process in terms of getting a response and reviewing them, the town board approving them. We feel sometime in January, we could make an announcement on the awarding of the bids, and in March or April, depending on weather conditions, we could play around. So that's sort of an outline of what the process will be, so we're hoping that tonight you will allow us to get to the first phase of the bid.
Some light at the end of the tunnel, it feels like saying congratulations after all of the trouble, you know, not trouble, but the long haul has been...
Challenging.
Yes, challenging. It's nice to finally be there, so thank you.
Are there any questions in regards to this, or comments?
Well, you know, one thing, thank you for the estimate, I think, you know, we need to start publicly discussing financing for the park, and, you know, it'll be great to see what happens with the bids. I know that we have estimates here, that the engineering, engineers have estimated it out at 1.2 million for just the infrastructure and the pavilion, and we don't have 1.2 million saved up for this, we're shy of that, so...
And this is just for phase one?
Yes. No fields, no, no community house, just the infrastructure and the pavilion. So we'll see what happens when the bids come back, and is there opportunity to cut back the plan, or fundraise, or what do you, can you give us an overview?
I would tell you that the committee has now established a 501(c)(3), so we plan on doing some fundraising. We are now working on a flyer that will be used and an outreach into the community, there will be some one-on-one fundraising, hopefully with some of the larger donors, and then mailings and emails that will go out into the community. So we hope that that will help with the funds that now will be needed.
Thank you. Bruce, did you want to say anything about, you've been working on this for a long time, too?
No, I think the progress has been slow, but it's been steady. There are things that we can pull out if we need to, we have some options in the bid package, right? We don't have, so...
There are a lot of, there are a lot of individual items, and they can be, things can be, some things can be pulled out in regards to, if we need to cut back on our budget. The one thing to say is that...
Bob, I'm sorry, do you mind just coming up? I know you're shy, but just for the public.
I'm not shy. If it worked, the people wouldn't say I'm shy. One of the things...
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Bob Ellsworth.
Bob Ellsworth.
Okay, one of the things that we can do, as Bruce said, there are each, there's each, there are a lot of line items within the, within the package, and they will all be bid separately, and depending upon what that, what the bids are, we could possibly cut back on some of those line items and continue on with the process. As Sally said, it took us a year and a half to get our 501(c)(3) from the federal government. It was unbelievable how long it took to get that 501(c)(3), but with that, it allows us to be able to fundraise. In fact, we're meeting this week on Thursday to discard, to discuss more ways to how we're going to go about fundraising, as Sally said, a flyer, some of the people that are, you know, we can go to on a one-to-one basis, and hopefully we can, we can start raising money that we can put into the accounts that we have just set up, so. And the other thing is, as far as the R F Ps go, as most of you, some of you know, I will now work part-time at Williams since I retired, and they've given me a lot of the local contractors, because I wanted to try and stay local, I've got a list of local contractors that we can send out the R F Ps to, that they can do, so we can try to stay within our scope of, you know, within the local community, so.
Well, thank you for your hard work, too, Bob.
Can you give me a rough timeline? I mean, I obviously can't hold it to it, but when would the work start, and when kind of, when would it be, and then when would it finish?
Well, as to when it would be, when it would be finished, hopefully sometime, if, we'd like to start in the spring, but it all depends upon the weather, what the conditions are, whether the contractors can get in there, because you've got to move dirt and earth and everything like that. If they can get in there, estimates, I hope by summertime, we can, we can have a lot of it accomplished, but it depends on, I don't know what they're going to hit, if they all of a sudden hit rock when they're, when they're bulldozing instead of dirt, you know, it complicates things, so...
Okay, so the pavilion would be done by the end of the summer, probably?
Hopefully, you know...
They've estimated four to six months for the construction period, it may take a little longer for the pavilion, but, you know, a lot of these can be...
Okay, I just want to get an idea.
Right.
Good, thank you.
And the trails, as soon as we get the, all the final sign-offs and everything, we can start working on the trails now.
Right. That was one thing I didn't bring up tonight, thank you Bruce, the trails, part of the trail system is concrete, it's the sidewalks that are leaning down into the park. From one point, from that point, they turn into what they call a stone dust trail, and that, that we can do with volunteers, we can just grade it, and then there's a membrane, there's, of course, there's specifications we have to follow that the engineers had, but we can do that with volunteers, and then part of it is mowing it, so we lay it out, and then we just regularly have somebody, get somebody, so we can mow it, and we'll lay out the width of the trail so people can walk on it.
Well, I think this is it, I think it looks like we can vote on this now, unless there are any questions from the public, or any further questions from board members? No? Again, thank you so much. So, we have a motion on the floor for, to allow us to send out bid specifications for R F Ps on the pavilion and the infrastructure, it's two that we're voting on. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
No, thank you. So we'll look forward to, and when are they due back, Sally?
Well, we have to figure out the exact date we're sending out the R F Ps, we want to check the list that we got from Williams, we have other lists from engineers, and we have others, so we want to be sure that, you know, we're...
You reach everybody.
...in here.
Great.
I think the bid process, I think we have to give them 30 days, I think, in most cases.
Once it goes out, right?
Right. Once it goes out, they have 30 days to respond.
So in the next couple of weeks, we'll get them, we'll get it out, then?
Right, yes.
Get some notice?
We may want to wait, because we don't want to hold, you know, we want the bid to hold during the fall, the first part of the year, spring.
Spring.
Yeah, so we have to check the timing very carefully.
Right.
Yeah.
And they, and the time elements will also be, you know, the contractors will know what the timeframe is going to be. They're going to know that we're not going to start something in two months, so it's a spring project.
Great. Well, it's exciting. Look forward to seeing what happens, so...
So am I.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll go, we'll start at the top, then, unless there's anything else that needs to be taken out of order, is somebody waiting here? Okay. Resolution 2014-336, I'll make a motion for preliminary accounts payable abstract 10B, vouchers 1219 through 1270, 35 checks totaling $58,812. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2014-337 for preliminary capital abstracts, three checks totaling $11,549.80. May I have a second?
Second.
You and I have stayed...
Fine, this is park-related, so thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution, I'll make a motion for Resolution 2014-338 for our budget transfers and amendment. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-341, appointment of our town alternate for public access northern Dutchess area, that is Panda. I didn't make a motion.
Motion.
Second, anybody?
So exciting.
Any discussion? Elaine, would you like to?
Well, there's been a vacancy for the town alternate at Panda for, I think it's been like two years, and so we've been looking for somebody for quite a while. Bill Mees, who is our town representative at Panda, had interviewed several people, and he narrowed it down to this one person, and some people dropped out, other people weren't qualified, so he narrowed it down to this one person, Eric Ryback, who he interviewed and spent time with and brought to the Panda Board, and Eric has a lot of related experience, and it seems to be working very well. Eric's already been attending the meeting, so this is just a formality of appointing him as the town alternate.
Great.
Which Bill Mees is thrilled about, because he's been doing it solo for the past couple of years, so he's really happy about this.
Well, thanks to Bill.
I have met with Mr. Ryback, because I do like to meet with people that we appoint, and I think it'll be fine.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you to Bill, and thanks to Eric for coming forward. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-342, repair of town hall steps. I will make a motion, is there a second?
Sure.
For the public. We had bids that weren't acceptable, and we had a Rhinebeck resident come forward and offer to donate services and materials in excess of $5,000, so it caps the cost to the town at $5,000. So, you know, although we haven't voted on this, I would like to... So, you know, although we haven't voted on this, I would like to thank Christopher Lipscomb and Monique Sagara for their very, very generous donation. And that's it? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think it's great that they donated some materials and labor. I think it's absolutely terrific. I think it's great that this board voted down the initial proposals, this spend over $20,000. On the wording of the resolution, my understanding is that we pay for the first $5,000 of both materials and labor. That, that's what we pay for is $5,000, and the rest is being contributed, is my understanding correct?
It's capped at $5,000, yes.
Right, so then I would suggest that we put in the resolution for a total of $5,000. And the second whereas, $5,000, looks like it just modified the word materials, not labor. So, on the second whereas, I would propose to move in excess of $5,000 after the word labor. And then in the resolved part, after the word beginning, for a total of $5,000. So, we're clear.
We have an open motion on the floor. Did you want to make a motion to resolve the...
Yes, make a motion that we revise the resolution.
Is there a second to revise the resolution?
Second.
All in favor of revising the resolution?
Aye.
I'll abstain, I think, so, I'm sorry. All, all moved. Now, we have to vote on the motion before us, revised motion. So, I think we have to open it again. I'll make a motion, no, it's been opened, so let's vote on the open motion with the wording change.
As amended.
As amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, and again, thank you, Kristen Monique.
I think we should put Mr. Lipscomb's picture in the town hall.
We, we'll put it on the bulletin board.
No, you put it, they put it in the foundation, and when we do...
Oh, encapsulate it?
Yes.
That's a great idea.
I encapsulate.
It's a great idea, a time capsule.
Maybe we can send him a letter from the board, formally.
And a time capsule, and a time capsule. I love that.
We have one of those plastic eggs from the egg hunt, between...
Geocaching containers.
I'm sorry I said that.
Resolution 2014-343, hourly pay schedule for on-call highway labor. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Kathy, would you like to address us regarding this motion?
Thank you, I think the resolution is pretty self-explanatory in there for the public to know. The current rate for labor in the town is $12 an hour, and we, in the course of budget discussions that the board ended up having regarding the Highway Department's budget issues, we, we talked about the challenge of finding people who are both qualified in the skilled and sometimes heavy labor that we do, and also for the intermittent style of work that it is, especially in the winter as well, with the very strange hours, unpredictable hours, and that the $12 rate was not attracting enough applicants that were really qualified to do the work. So, in discussions with the board, we had talked about raising that rate, and this resolution does propose raising that rate to $14.25 an hour.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Resolution 2014-344, temporary boarding of animals at Reinebeck Animal Hospital. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think we have to work out the feasibility of how exactly it's going to work. The animal hospital is not one who asks people for money. They want to be out of that. All they want is a statement from either the dog warden or some town official that, that can release the dog. So, we'll have to make arrangements as to how money will be taken for the amount, the charge at the Animal Hospital 4350. And arrangements will have to be made with Roger to coordinate with the Animal Hospital, so he can get a key to put a dog in in the evening.
So, can we break this down one thing at a time? Because the first thing I heard you say was the pay. So, I will find out from Roger how it currently works when he has somebody that picks up their animal, and they're charged a fee. I'm assuming Roger gets that from the people, but I'll find out from him?
Yeah.
So, I will get back to you. And then the other thing, you mentioned...
Well, I don't even think you have to get back to him, as long as there's a feasible thing. Either Roger gets the money, or the town clerk gets...
Right, but I'll report back to the board my, the outcome, so that everybody knows what to expect.
But I think we may have to implement this very soon, I don't know when...
Well, let me ask you something, though, the 4350 per night, is that per animal? Because you were alluding to something before about how many animals would be covered under that charge.
No, it's 4350.
So, 4350 per night, per animal?
Yes.
Okay.
And that covers walking the dogs twice a day, feeding the dog, and cleaning the facility afterwards.
Okay, so the pay is the one thing with Roger. The second thing is the key. So, Roger needs to arrange to get a key.
Contact Tom Mullins at the Animal Hospital.
Tom Mullins at the Reinebeck Animal Hospital?
Yes.
Normally, they don't release animals on Sunday or after like 6:00 or 7:00.
What was the first part of?
They don't release animals on Sundays, currently.
Okay.
Right, but Roger will have a key.
But Roger would be the one who'd be releasing the animals, right? The, the Animal Hospital would be responsible for that, I'm assuming, is that correct?
Right, my understanding is they're willing to let Roger have a key to the facility where the dogs would be kept. But again, that has, he has to work that out with Mr. Mullins.
Okay, and in the case of, let's say, somebody, Roger's working during the day, which he does, and somebody calls and wants their dog in the daytime, can they, will they, will the vet release an animal?
Only if they are called and said, release the animal.
So, they have to...
We've gotten the fee.
Okay, so, so they should, they're going to have to speak, there's going to have to be communication with Roger before they can release an animal?
Yes.
So, Roger has to approve it?
Or, or, if the money comes into town hall, I would think John could do the same.
Did Roger do that, John?
No.
That hasn't happened.
I think it would be best to keep it with animal control.
Yeah, because he has the truck, pick up the animals. I think that'd be too much to ask of Roger.
It's too much communication.
Yeah, yeah, I think Roger would be...
But the only thing that's slightly different here is it's 4350, so we don't have to incur another day's charge if Roger is not available.
You've got a truck, Joe, with a nice little cabinet that you sit... So, I'll work that out with Roger, no problem. Thank you for doing that, too, Joe, for calling in, I appreciate it.
Okay, so I think the resolution is fine, because it... Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Any new business? Any people here who would like to address the board on new business? We have several discussion items. We have the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District and the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. Also, we did receive a letter today from Weston and Sampson, from Carl Stone, about this. But we were going to, I think I put this on, I think Bruce did, but I think it's me, discuss whether or not we wanted to proceed, at least, you know, it's a very, the beginning stages of having the water and wastewater, the County Water and Wastewater Commission, look at taking over the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District. We would have to open our books to them, they would do a physical, you know, it's all the exploratory stage.
At this point, it makes a lot of sense. The, the letter that you mentioned from, from the engineer was that the DEC has accepted our work, but now they want us to commit to finishing it.
Yes.
So, I, I think, and it'd be probably good to, to move ahead with this at this point.
Yes.
I don't think we have the trust, the town has the trust of the Sewer District. I think it was lost 10, 12 years ago.
But we also don't have the staff to, to do this, you know, and it...
Yeah.
We reinvent the wheel every time there's an issue. There's no continuity for the homeowners down there, to a certain extent. It's beyond our capacity. We have one full-time maintenance person and part-time help, and we're a part-time board. Bridget Barkley gave a presentation this summer, and, you know, they have staff engineers and maintenance people and, and operators. So, I can, if everyone's in agreement, and Bruce, you noticed the public for this, the Vandenberg Cove people? Did you let them know we'd be, I'll email them tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't know whether I did or not.
I think you did, two weeks ago, I remember an email. But I'll let them know that we decided we want to go ahead and have the county look at the... Show, at least show them what ownership under the county commission would look like. You know, it's non-committing, we'd be going to the next step. And I think Bridget Barkley said it would be several months, the process.
Yeah, and she's also said it's not done until it's open, so you can always turn it off at any point.
I spoke to her at the shared services meeting as to whether she's been contacted by any of the Vandenberg Cove residents. She said she did hear from the gentleman who spoke here. I think he sent her a copy of the communication that he sent to residents. She hasn't heard anything further, so I think very definitely we ought to ask her to continue to take a look. I guess the second thing is the letter that you got today, or that we got today. And I think we really have to sit down with that to figure out how that's going to get done, whether we are capable of doing some of it. That was the recommendation. If not, what are realistic deadlines, and how it's going to be paid for? I assume that the Sewer District doesn't have ready cash to pay, so I think we're going to be involved in a series of loans to, to think of our quote-unquote various fund balances as we financed Vandenberg Cove improvements in the past.
I think we have only had several thousand dollars left. I got this letter late today, it was emailed, I think, you know, after lunch, and I didn't have a lot of time to look at it before tonight's meeting.
Should we set a special meeting? Should we hold till the next board meeting? How do you want to handle, will you get back to us as to how this should be scheduled?
Let me tell you how it's been done in the past. Can I just, first, first of all, in the preliminary tentative budget that is in the Cove, there's $5,000 in there for the county takeover, all right? Normally, what happens is if, if we run over budget, it, the town covers it, and then we bill them the next year, and we get the money back. So, any of this that we would spend now, that they don't have the money...
For correcting these issues.
Right, we, we would get next year. And so, the sooner we do it, the better, because we can get it into the budget for next year and get, and get the money back right away, okay? Figuring out what, what it is. There's things like taking trees away from the, the outlet pipes. We can do that kind of stuff, the downed trees. Most of the other stuff has been done, really. This, there isn't that much. We don't have to do the relining, which is great, because that was...
That's huge.
Yeah. And the, the fixing the flow meters and calibrating, all of that is...
That was done.
Yeah, so, you know, probably the, the real thing we should do is sit down with the engineer real quick, get a specific wish list, and then go.
Right, but it's not a wish list, it's a demand list.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
The county...
A demand list, Joe, sorry.
The DEC is demanding of us.
I think I, did I forward this to all of you, or just put it in your box?
I got it by email.
Okay, so I did forward it. Bruce, can you email him tomorrow and just ask him to enumerate all of the fixes that, that the DEC would like?
Yeah, he's going to tell us to read the plan, but...
Yeah, well, let him cut and paste it for us, and cut it up into bite-sized pieces.
And see if we need a meeting with him, and when is deadline that we have to...
Well, I don't think there's anything to, to vote on. We have to do this, so this is something that Bruce, as liaison, I think, can take care of with our, with the operator and the engineers, correct?
Yeah, I can do it.
Yeah, it's sort of ma, it's mandatory, you know? It's like we, we've already been told we have to do it. We agreed to do it when we paid for this, you know, the, the study, so I think it's following through. But we'll discuss it further, I think, in two weeks, see where we are.
Fun, something you asked to be done earlier, a little special meeting.
Right. Any further discussion or questions?
The county authority probably could give some advice as well.
They can't get involved until, at this point. We have to send them a letter of intent. Pardon me?
They don't give free advice?
No, thanks, Fred. So, I, I am going to send her a letter of intent that we'd like to proceed. That's what we decided. Okay, anything else, or can we move on? Official newspaper, Bruce, you had wanted to...
Well, since the other one went out, we've always had two. John says we only need one. The problem is, is that that one goes out for some reason, we still have, that's why you carry two. So, I just thought we should probably just, as a safeguard, name another paper.
What, the Poughkeepsie Journal, or we need a weekly?
But the Observer wasn't a weekly.
No.
Right.
Bi-weekly.
Right, so, so why do we need a weekly now if we didn't have one before?
Well, Bruce is saying in case this one goes out of business. So, if the only weekly we have goes out of business, you know...
It's also a cost factor. The ads in the, in the weeklies and bi-weeklies tend to run a lot less, and if you have something that doesn't need that kind of daily exposure or timely exposure, that, you know, that's something to think about for your ads.
Whatever you guys would like to do.
What are the options?
I think we have the River Chronicle, we have Poughkeepsie Journal.
And the Freedman is our other?
We have the Freedman is our, it was the Freedman and the Observer, and the Observer's closed, so... We weren't able to do a lot in the Observer, because it was bi-weekly, so... I think we felt that the ads in the Poughkeepsie Journal were expensive, so...
Well, is the River Chronicle weekly, or...
Bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly.
It's bi-weekly, I teach, weekly.
What is weekly? What is weekly?
So I've been... You're here all the time, too.
Local newspapers.
Yeah.
Okay. Were you always weekly? Did you just go weekly?
No, no.
Okay, I'm confused, as usual. So is this, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the River Chronicle be our second official newspaper.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So be it. Endeavor, Victor Cornelius Faye is on as a discussion item, and Joe, I think you put this on.
Yeah. In our discussions, a number of months ago, in connection with possible grants for rock cliff, stormwater sewers, drainage, et cetera, we were informed that there are possible grants available, and that the time was of the essence. We entered into a contract with a grant writer and paid him some money, but we haven't really proceeded with this project. I haven't been informed that the state has moved, so I don't know. But I don't know if this board is interested in pursuing grants at this point. So if we're not, I can try to get some money back that we paid. I don't know how successful the...
What about inviting Victor in to talk about anything that might exist right now that could be helpful?
Well, the more you...
Talking about the Salazar Elapark?
Well, we're talking about trying to get a refund for something we've paid for him already for.
Or, but the refund would be from Victor's payment, correct? The fee paid to him. So instead of asking for money back, we could say to him, is there something else you could pursue, and that's what the money would cover, so he wouldn't have to pay it back.
Well, I think that's a good follow-up position. I'd like to see if we could get cash. If I can't get cash...
What can he do, what can he do for the waterfront?
Right, maybe we can do a trade.
Well, not even just that, but what exists out there that could be helpful. I mean, we're talking about our budget, we're talking about...
Well, this was, don't forget, specifically for all the superfund money from Sandy, is it right, Sandy?
So we're not interested, though, in hearing?
No, I think you've made an excellent suggestion. As a second, rather, at least my mind, it's better to get cash if we can get it and we decide to engage him. If he says no way, contract doesn't compel me to give you a refund, we can try again to do some other work without anything.
Go for it.
Something about, oh, somebody to pay back money they were paid, they're just, I don't know. I just think if there's a way to find out if there's, because if we invited him here to talk to us and there's nothing that he could seek right now that would be helpful to us, then it would be, I think it would be a kinder way of having to ask for our money back than just calling.
Let me just say that he approached us. He's the one who came to us. We didn't ask him to, he let us know that there was this money available.
No, I understand, but we, you know, we said, okay. It's there enforcing circumstances all the way around, so that's all.
I'd like to try and get it back. Bruce? Go for it, Joe. And then you know your fallback.
Yeah. No, I think you made an excellent suggestion as a fallback.
Okay, thank you. Travel policy, travel payment policy. Joe, I think you put this on as well.
Right. As you know, we are asking for employee handbook to be revised.
We bifurcated it.
Pardon me?
We've split it up into two.
Yeah. The reviser, our labor consultant, suggested that we split it up, the employee handbook into two. One would deal with non-union pay scales and policies, particular to non-union people, and the other would be just a general statement. And he advised that that's the way it's usually done now, and at least that's the way he does it. And I think we're going to get a draft from him that will be bifurcated, so it will be two. But again, thinking about what should go in it and what's missing from it. I think all of us, you know, may want to skim the employee handbook. I can give people a electronic copy, which was made with great effort, because we don't have here an electronic copy, but we've created one for the consultant, and I have that available.
That'd be great.
Want to skim it. But I don't think there's anything in connection with payment for travel. And I think there's maybe a couple of issues, and if we can advise him how we feel about it. I think one is for hourly employees who travel, whether they should be paid for those hours where we, or their supervisor asks them to travel, whether on a weekday when they're not normally scheduled to work, or on a weekend. And then I guess the other is reimbursement. I don't think we have a meal allowance specifically. I don't know if we need one, but often travel policies have a restriction on meals. And then hotel policy, if the employee is going here or there, and they want to bring a spouse or significant other, and whether we would allow that, but obviously not paying for the extra person, and I assume we would only reimburse the rate for a single person. So I think these are the issues, and if we can reach some kind of consensus on it, I can advise the person who's revising, give us a draft which will contain this, and we obviously could change it once we see it in writing. So, you know, if you want to discuss it now, travel for an hourly worker where they're not otherwise being paid and they're asked to travel, and that, I guess, could be during a weekday, during a weekend.
Well, we have custom, we have, you know, how we've done it in the past, and I can certainly tell you that, I've spoken with Shelley about it. There's, you know, essential, there's classes or travel that you have to do that's mandatory, and travel that you have to do that's not mandatory. And I think mandatory travel, we pay for, no matter what. The non-mandatory, I believe that the practice has been that we reimburse them for their hours if they would have been working that day. So if they are going to miss work, we pay for them. If they're going to not be paid, say they work on a Monday and they have to travel on a Monday, we pay them, if it's an elective class.
I assume this guy's done travel policies for other towns?
Yes.
Why don't we take a look at some of that?
Yeah, I was going to say. Yeah, you don't have to. There are a lot of templates in the townships which, I think it's actually mandatory. I think the comptroller's office requires towns to have a travel policy. And that actually makes me think, the other thing, we should have a cell phone policy, too, because that's the other thing that the comptroller's office mandates for towns to have, and we don't have a cell phone. And the only other thing I wanted to ask as far as policies go, I asked this in an email that I never heard back from anybody. When I went to the workplace violence prevention training, they said it's mandatory for all towns to have a workplace prevention policy in place. Do we have that?
I think we do. You have to check with Shelley.
Okay.
It might need to be updated.
Okay. But there's templates for, because when we were talking about policies in the past, I saw a lot of different templates. I mean, you're right, it's like, why reinvent the wheel? So I think we should do that with both the travel and the cell at the same time, and just get them done because they're both mandated.
Okay, I'll ask them for some models, and then we can wrestle with. Yeah, I think one of the key issues is travel to association of towns meetings on weekends. I think there's somebody who travels to planning, conference, upstate, travel to various meetings.
Ag and markets.
Right. A lot of our travel, I think, in a sense, is not mandated, but it's a good idea because that way you can keep up to date on things. So I think we should consider that. But let's see what models our reviser has to offer, what he's done in the past.
Anything else?
Do you want me to tackle the cell phone piece? I've stabbed at it before.
Let's give it, let's give it to him. Let's see if he has anything.
Okay, so I'll give you the stuff that I've had from the past, if you want.
I don't want to be too... Let's see if he has something.
Okay.
And then I'll circulate that, then we can decide whether you want to give him what you have, or what the state mandates. I don't know, does the state have a...
Well, they have a set of criteria, that whatever your policy is, it has to meet that criteria. So different towns have different policies.
Pardon me? The state probably has one, I can't imagine it, for their own employees, right?
I don't know if the state does. That's a very good question, but I know, I mean, you would think they would, of course, but I know that towns do, because that's what I was checking into, there were like five or six towns. But it makes sense that the state would.
We're doing an employee handbook, so we can have them add anything that we want.
Yeah.
We can have them add protocol on, you know, update our computer use protocol, you know, violence, anything that we want can be in this handbook.
Yeah, I think the bigger issue, though, outside of the handbook, is just that there's policies that we're supposed to have that we don't right now.
Yes.
So that's the more important thing.
Anything else? Any public comment on non-agenda items? If you know, we have our county-led Joe Tyner here. I'm sure you'd like to come up and address.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Great.
It's that time of year again, county budget time. Wanted to invite everybody tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. at Arnold Moving and Storage, Pleasant Valley Route 44. I'll just have Bob there with the county executives giving his county's budget address. I'll be there. Out of respect, I'm probably not going to agree with everything that's been said, but I'll be there. Everybody's invited. That's tomorrow, 4:00 p.m. This coming Wednesday, 4:00 p.m. on the 6th floor of the county office building in the legislative chambers, a sort of a more formal, official presentation. And I think Wednesday morning, we actually get the hard copy of this proposed budget for next week. I would be remiss if I did not thank everybody here, especially Bruce Washburn and Kathy Kinsella. Bruce, once again, for the third time this year, helped you transport tables to make our repair cafe a couple of weeks ago, a success. And because of Kathy, Bob Boyen and the Tom Hiley Garage, we're going to do another one on Saturday, January 17th. So I was pleasantly surprised. There was a large influx of people there. A lot of people.
People love it.
Almost too many people here in the beginning. It was like, it wasn't spread out over four hours. There were a lot of people here for the first hour, too. I'm sure Bob, they've shared with Kathy. But we're going to try again, and I'm not going to say any names. One of our repair coaches that was supposed to show up, didn't show up. So, and a guy showed up who I didn't expect would show up. So if anybody is a handy man, handy woman, can just fix things, please call me 453-2105-876-2488. We need you for our next repair cafe, which is going to be here in this room, Saturday, January 17th, noon to 4:00 p.m. Also, there's probably going to be no public comment allowed tomorrow or Wednesday on the county budget, but the first official public hearing on the county budget, as proposed by the county executives, comes Thursday, November 6th, 7:00 p.m. in the county legislative chambers. So please.
When is he, when is the budget being released?
Wednesday morning at 10:00, I believe.
Any news about our sales tax? Is that ever coming back?
Well, at the risk of doing this, you're looking at the one human being in Dutchess County out of 300,000. I've been raising a large ruckus.
Oh, no, I think there are...
Just even over the last week.
No, there are a couple at this board, at this table.
I mean, I've been trying to get my colleagues to make the point that even, with all due respect to Marcus, he's a good guy, I've known him for 15 years, even before he releases his proposed budget, just like my friend Mark Dunleavy up in Albany for 20 years does his People Stay the State. I mean, I did a press conference today, this afternoon, saying, okay, you know, there's been a lot of bragging about the $6 million fund balance, the budget surplus at the end of fiscal 2013. And so maybe some of the folks in, you know, the town boards that I interact with in Clinton and here, and a lot of people I know in cities of Poughkeepsie, people are, at the municipal level, I don't think I need to tell you, a little bit frustrated over the fact that there's been a lot of bragging over the $6 million surplus.
Yeah, yet, yet, we've had our, they, the windfall to the county was about $5 million on the capping of our sales tax. So that's the, that's the growth in the fund balance.
I did a press conference today, and I'm continuing in the hopes of having an impact. And I'm asking you and everybody in this room, put Thursday, November 25th, I'm sorry, wait a minute, Thursday, November 6th at 7:00 p.m. That's the official public hearing on the county budget. I'm doing a forum here in this room on Thursday, the 20th, I'm sorry, Tuesday, the 25th of November at 5:30.
I'm sorry, when is it released again, Joe?
This Monday morning at 10:00.
Joe, let me say this. A number of us attended a shared services meeting down in Poughkeepsie in October. Was there not two announcements that we should pay attention to? One, that the grants program will be continued another year, but at the level of $1 million.
Cut from...
Two.
Yeah, from the county.
The county has a $6 million surplus.
Well, whatever, there's $1 million available next year, so that we ought to start thinking about what projects we can apply for. The other thing, and, you know, it may be that the audience knows, is that we, together with three other towns, were awarded a grant for a paver and a roller. I think the grant is 250...
265,000. We're sharing with Mylan and Pine Plains.
No, not Pine, Armenia and Northeast. And we're working with them to come up with an intermunicipal agreement. The highway superintendents will get together and figure out a schedule and how these machines can be carried from one town to another. And hopefully, it will turn out that... And hopefully, it will turn out that we will have savings from this. So now we have a big paver and an older, smaller paver, which Kathy has reported has already saved us the purchase price.
More than that?
More than that.
Much, much more than that.
So hopefully, that will continue in good health. And with the new paver, we can do bigger roads ourselves with savings. So that's good news.
Kathy was telling me it might actually be more of a savings to the taxpayers if some of the members of the town board were to volunteer to help with the paving in the building.
That's correct.
I'll try and forgive her, I don't care.
Unfortunately, I think the union would not permit this.
I was going to, all right. I'll try to wrap up briefly. It's not just the county sales tax revenue sharing formula issue when it comes to the county budget. There are a few other things that folks are frustrated at, doing door-to-door recently, you know, elections going on. People in my town, doing door-to-door in Clinton, Clinton quarters recently, are livid about a $62 county fuel tax bill. And, you know, they know it's sort of the symbolic significance. They don't need, quote unquote, desperate to get that $62 back. So again, $6 million, county balances flush, fund surplus. Where there's a will, there's a way, there should be a way to find, to give that money back.
Sales tax back.
And the fuel tax revenue collected. Also, the Good Shepherd Church here in Reinbeck is one of about eight or nine different Dutchess County offices for the aging senior friendship centers. I've been sort of on the soapbox for years about, I succeeded one year, I was not successful the last few years. It's only on a four-day week. And there's, if you've ever visited, that place is really kind of a cool place. The senior citizens will go there, they love it. It's not just about food, they interact with each other, it's a social event. And the fact that for the last several years, it's only been a four-day week there, at Beacon and Millerton and the other senior friendship centers for the county office for the aging. Again, $6 million county budget surplus, it would take literally less than a quarter million dollars a year to put that back to a five-day week. Not to mention $100 a year to bring back the Dutchess County Human Rights Commission. An hour south of us, there's a Human Rights Commission in Westchester County that has subpoena power. We no longer have a Dutchess County Office of Consumer Affairs that was eliminated. Youth programs that were eliminated, they don't want to bring back, but they got all sorts of money, like a couple hundred million for a new jail. Anyway, please get active, I cannot do it alone when it comes to the county budget. I'm doing a forum here, Thursday, November 25th, 5:30 PM. You can see it at the official county budget hearing, Thursday, November 6th, 7:00 PM. And at December 2nd, I don't know if it's at the bar, in the legislative chambers, December 2nd, that's a Tuesday, 7:00 PM. That's the last public hearing on the county budget. And the only other thing I was going to say is I passed out those flyers. I live in the town of Clinton.
Joe, is there anything you could send, I'm sorry about this, you know, I'm, I meet with the supervisors and mayors of the county every month and probably, maybe there'll be some momentum to go and address and, you know, speak about the $6 million addition to the funds balance and our cut of sales tax, because to a person, we're still really upset about it. Grants aside, you know, we'd rather have the sales tax.
Is there any chance you guys could do a value use app at these? Our friend John Penny, 515 words from the Poughkeepsie Journal. And I would also say, if I were you guys, I would do two different press conferences at Candlelight Bingles. The night of the public hearing. Because Thursday, November 6th, 7 o'clock, that's the first public hearing. Do it at 6 o'clock, right in front of the building. And then again, with as many local elected officials as possible. Then again, Tuesday, December 2nd, 7 o'clock, the public hearing starts. Get as many local electives from all across the county at 6 o'clock. Do your 20, 30-minute press conference, because the media is all going to be there. And they would, they would cover it. I'm willing to bet radio, TV, and newspaper coverage if as many elected officials were there.
I'll re-mail you tonight, tomorrow.
And so, I live in the town of Clinton, there's something called the Megan Institute for Holistic Studies. For several years, I've been attending their sort of annual sustainability conference. This time it was called Rebuilding a Collaborative Commons. Got to literally hang out and chat with Brandon Ashiva and all sorts of other folks, Jeremy Rifkin was there. And so I'm inviting everybody, we're doing a follow-up forum, Sunday, November 9th, in this room, at 2:00 PM. And, you know, Santa Fe, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, they're actually looking at local public banks, sort of modeled after what North Dakota's doing, you should check that out. And like in Portland, this is Portland, Oregon, they have an hour exchange where it's like a time bank, sort of a local currency, where even the local health clinic is accepting, you know, hours. Everybody's hour of work is the same. But there's a lot of, I'm not going to bore everybody with the whole long list, but there's a lot of really cool, innovative, exciting, win-win stuff that we could do here locally. You know, growing solar, moving towards zero waste, et cetera, but I can't do it alone. And a number of folks who attended the, this past weekend's event, seemed jazzed. I would like to have some Reinbeck people there, that's why the follow-up forum is going to be Sunday, November 9th, 2:00 PM, here in this room. Got actually two Republicans to sign on to a letter about the oil trains, the oil bomb trains. If you didn't know it, Canada in April decided to ban these DOT 111s. And thanks to Don Sackman on March 4th, two Republicans, the county legislators, signing on to my letter for us to do the same thing as Canada, the whole Democratic caucus almost, new power lines letter. And the other thing I was going to say is about the PCBs is the last thing I'll say. If you look at Clearwater's website, Hudson River, Clearwater.org, and there's a big meeting that is coming up in just the next week or two. There's like 136 acres of PCBs, we get our water, you guys, Reinbeck gets its water from the river, right? Or the village Reinbeck does. 136 acres of PCBs still have to be dredged from the river. And so that's an issue, there's a forum coming up soon on that. That's it, I'm at 453-2105-876-2488, thanks for your.
Joe, you said something about the power lines letter, what is that?
Okay, it was, the folks at the Hudson Valley Safe Energy Coalition, hvscc.org, scenic Hudson and many different municipalities, their new thing is that the PSC is not curable, that the new chairwoman, Audrey Zibelman, has proposed something called Reforming the Energy Vision. So a new focus for several months now. And again, actually, this Saturday at 2:00, there's a big forum at Bar College. You might be interested in, I think Gideon Ashwell, bar professor's going to be there. But this Reforming the Energy Vision, that proceeding should be really focused on and looked at because the folks at the PSC are not completely corrupt and inept and clueless and incompetent as proven by this proposal, the RED, R-E-D, Reforming the Energy Vision. It sort of makes reference to the possibility for locally generated renewable power. Microbes, things like that, cutting-edge stuff that would obviate the need. And a lot of people, like this bar professor speaking this Saturday, too, had pointed out, like, what is the real need for this transmission network? So I got March 4th, a Republican, signed on to that, most of us in the Democratic caucus. And the letter also talked about Bottles Energy, which is a private firm that has proven for over a year now, we don't have to destroy property values in Clinton, my unpleasant valley in Columbia County to solve any so-called energy congestion bottleneck, which even, that's Sullivan Bank. A lot of people are saying there's, you know, is this really, quote unquote, necessary? So go to hvscc.org for more.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Anybody else, any other new business comments, questions? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, good night.